That's gonna be real interesting.
Ready?
I'll bet you a beer after the meeting.
All right.
I'm aware.
All right, seven o'clock. Got a call tonight. Uh, the city council meeting for City Lake Elmo, July fifteenth, seven P. M. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Be on the agenda as approval of the agenda. Everybody's okay with the agenda, or if you'd like something moved or changed, please, uh, speak now.
I would like to, um, add our hundred years anniversary celebration.
Hundred year anniversary celebration. Okay. We'll put that at fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Anything else? All right, if everybody's cool with that, uh, I'll, I'll entertain a motion for the amended agenda.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Support.
We have a motion in a second to approve the amended agenda with item fourteen, hundred year anniversary celebration discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes from the July first, twenty twenty-five meeting. We're in our packet. May had a chance to read if there's anything outstanding that needs to be changed. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July first.
Move to approve the minutes from July one.
Second.
We have a motion in the second on the agenda for, or the meeting minutes from July first. All those in favor, please, uh, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, good deal. Public comments inquiry, inquiries. We have one this evening. Um, when I say your name, please come to the podium, state your first and last name along with your address for the record, and you'll have six minutes to speak. We please request that you have respect, respectful dialogue. The council does not, uh, answer questions during this time, but we will take notes if needed to have staff get back to you. Would Mr. Paul Boltman?
My name is Paul Boltman. I live at eighty-two forty-three Deer Con Court. I'm here today to make sure that the members of the council are aware of how much of a problem the noise from pickleball is for the neighbors to the parks. My home is three hundred forty feet from the courts at Pebble Park. We are subject to nearly constant percussive sound of the paddles hitting the wall. Sometimes.
It's fourteen hours a day. Some, some days have legs where you don't hear it for, in the middle of the day. There is also a fair amount of yelling that you hear from the participants, but the real problem is that percussive sound, I don't know if you'll call it a thwack or a pop or whatever you want to call it, it's quite loud. I like to believe that if the council members were aware of the noise that pickleball puts out, they would not have placed the courts in neighborhoods without any notice to the neighbors of the parks or feedback from the affected neighbors. Exposure to constant noise is a known stress inducer with serious health consequences. There have been numerous studies on this topic. I am not against people having a fun physical activity to participate in. This country needs anything that promotes physical activity. We all know that. But any positive health effects that the participants are gaining comes at the expense of myself, my family, and my neighbors. It comes at the expense of our health. On page fifty-seven of the Lake Elmo Park System Plan, there is a recommendation that the pickleball courts not be placed within six hundred feet of a home. My experience is that this is a pretty valid recommendation. I think if you get six hundred feet away, you're not going to hear much. But my home is three hundred and forty feet from the courts, and it's not the closest one. There's one that's about forty feet from the courts. There are fifteen homes within six hundred feet of the courts at Pebble Park. There are twelve homes within six hundred feet of the courts at Tablin Park. There are forty-one homes within six hundred feet of the courts at Ivywood Park. And there are eleven single-family homes and an unknown number of apartments within six hundred feet of the court, courts at Lyons Park. In addition to the negative mental and physical health aspects of being exposed to a constant background noise, there is the issue of the detriment to my property value and the property value of my neighbors. I would not be surprised if my property value has declined by six figures. While I would welcome any form of noise mitigation such as noise barriers around the courts, I believe that the ultimate solution to be, would be to relocate pickleball courts and, and follow the six hundred-foot guideline. Something that generates as much noise as pickleball does not belong in a neighborhood park with adjacent homes. If you have any questions about, uh, what we experience, I'll answer them. Also, you're welcome to come to my property and, uh, listen to what we endure. I will, uh, follow up this talk with, uh, email notification to each of you so you can contact me. If you have any questions now, I could answer them or...
We, we don't engage in conversation during that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we have, um, presentation from Mr. Mike Huntley, representing the Youth Service Bureau.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and residents of Lake Elmo. Thank you for the invitation to speak tonight about Youth Service Bureau, and we appreciate your support. In fact, that type of support is necessary for our continued success in operations. My name is Michael Huntley. I'm the executive director of Youth Service Bureau. I've been with the organization since nineteen eighty-nine. I'm still with the organization because I love what we do and the purpose that we serve in the community. Some of you may be familiar with Y S B, and for others, this might be new information, and I'll be as brief as I can, but I also want to be complete. Youth Service Bureau is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization, and we've been operating since nineteen seventy-seven. We have an office in Stillwater, an office in Woodbury, and an office in Cottage Grove, and we serve the whole area, you know, up and down between those cities. We provide a variety of early intervention and prevention services for youth and their families, and we're the only organization in the area that works exclusively with kids and families. That, that's what we do. Our services include diversion, family counseling, school-based chemical health support, youth and family education, and a military family support program that is actually in expansion and development right now, and in about a year or so, it will be officially launched, and at that time, it will be called the First Responder Family Support Program. And in addition to military, we'll be adding firefighters and law enforcement and their families into that programming. The financial res, support that we receive helps our fees remain affordable. We have a very generous sliding fee for families that need that. We also, um, help families who may need interpreter services, and we can provide those through donated funds at no cost to the family. In two thousand twenty-four, so last year, we served six hundred and thirty-five unduplicated youth and their families through all our services, which totaled up just under four thousand hours of direct service to those families. That number does not include public speaking presentations where we, our staff were out, uh, presenting on topics about youth development and parenting and discipline and drug use trends and things like that. And those presentations, um, had just over one thousand five hundred attendees. Here in your city of Lake Elmo, in two thousand twenty-four, we served at least thirty-four youth and delivered almost two hundred hours of direct service to those youth, and I have, um, a little breakdown here that will help, uh, illuminate that a little bit. In two thousand twenty-four, there were thirty-four, um, kids and their families receiving services. Five of those youth came through our diversion program. Twenty-two of those youth were involved in our school-based chemical health services, and seven of those youth were involved in our family therapy program. And I have an update for the first half of twenty twenty-five. We've already seen twenty-seven youth here from Lake Elmo. Three of those have come through the diversion services, twenty have come through the school-based chemical health support service program, and four have been involved in family therapy. We have, um, some really good outcome measures, and I'd like to share a little bit of that with you too, because we're, we're pretty good at what we do, and I'm, I'm proud of that, and proud of our staff. One of our statistics, and it, it's the highest it's ever been, we actually get, I call it a report card, but it's a report from Washington County, so it's not our own data collection. This is a external, um, source, and they measure how many kids who come through our diversion program stay uninvolved with the juvenile justice system for at least one year. And our report card, uh, this year is ninety-four percent, and that's the highest it's ever been. We're really excited about that. We have a couple of other statistics I can share. We do some evaluation of our services with the kids who come through our chemical health support services, and those are at the middle schools and high schools, um, in all the districts that we serve, which includes, uh, the Stillwater District. Ninety percent of those youth indicate they're able to use more healthy coping skills instead of substances when dealing with stress and other pressures that they're experiencing. And for the families who come through our counseling services, seventy-two percent of the parents say that the situation that brought them in for services was either resolved or made manageable within three months. So we're excited about those results and that effectiveness. For twenty twenty-six, we are asking for five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars in support of our services here in your area, and we have submitted a purchase of services contract for your consideration. We have a website. It is W W W dot Y S B dot net. It has all kinds of information about, uh, what we do and, and how we do things, and you're welcome to check that out. Are there any questions that I can respond to this evening?
Councilmember Holt?
Thank you for that and for, and for the services, the work that you all do. To help me understand, and I, we're definitely be approving this because it's for our community, but to help me understand with, I know Family Means does some counseling as well in the area. Is there, are they distinctly different for some of the services that they are offering when it comes to the counseling side?
Yes. So Family Means covers, um, adults as well. They'll work with adults individually. We don't do that. We only work when a young person, a youth, is identified as the, um, primary receiver of services, or if we're billing insurance, which we will do, it has to be a youth who has a diagnosis. That's how we do it. Family Means can also serve, um, adults, and they have a special senior citizen program as well.
Gotcha. Thank you for all the work and providing the update to the community.
Thank you.
Can you remind me what the total amount was?
The total amount that we're requesting?
Yeah.
Five thousand, um, let me double check, make sure I say it right.
Seven seventy-seven.
Five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, uh, I thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley.
Thank you.
All right. On the consent agenda this evening, we have approved payments and disbursements, approved pay request number one for the twenty twenty-five street and utility improvements, four, accept improvements and approve security reduction for Union Park West, number five is approve release of warranty security for public improvements for Easton Village Fifth Edition, number six, accept improvements and approve security reduction for the Dairy Queen at ninety-nine twenty-three Hudson Boulevard Project, number seven, approve pay request number five for well number two PFOS Water Treatment Plant Project, number eight, approve P O C fire, fire firefighter hiring, number nine, approve the Youth Service Bureau contract. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the consent, approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Consent agenda hereby, hereby approved. Jumping into the regular agenda, we have the twenty twenty-five bond sale resolution twenty twenty-five zero five four, and we did get a revised motion sheet, um, on this from staff, and I think, uh, it was...
I hand it directly over to Tammy Umdahl.
Tammy, all right.
Mayor, council, good evening. Tammy Umdahl from Northland Security, serving as advisor to the city on the sale of the series twenty twenty-five A bonds to finance street improvement projects. This morning, Northland took bids on behalf of the city. I will cover those results, but first, with respect to the bonds, the bonds, um, were offered at an original power amount of two million one eighty-five. The bonds are structured over ten years with relatively level annual debt service payments. As part of the process, we did recommend that the city pursue a rating on the bonds from Moody's Investor Service. The city has an outstanding rating on your outstanding bonds. The city's existing rating of double A one was affirmed by Moody's as part of this process, so congratulations to the city on that. With respect to the sale process this morning and the acceptance of bids, there were seven bids that were received. The low bid was from Brownstone Investment Group out of New York. There was national interest in these bonds despite relatively smaller size. The final, um, offering with, and we use the true interest cost, which takes into account the purchase price of the bonds, at three point three-two percent. The estimate in the finance plan, which was from, um, June, beginning of June, and I presented to you on June seventeenth, was four point one eight percent at the time. The bonds were bid with premium. That means that the underwriter is offering more than the purchase price of the bonds in order to, um, offer higher coupons. The net effect of that is that premium and unused discount, meaning the underwriter is working for less than what was estimated, is being used to reduce the power amount of the bonds, which is why the resolution before you this evening has a lower amount at two million twenty-five thousand is the final amount, and that reflects that reduction on use of that premium bid rather than to fund construction costs to reduce the amount of principal that is being issued. With that, Mayor, council, it would be my recommendation to you to approve the resolution awarding the sale of the bonds to Brownstone Investment Group for the stated rate. With that, um, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Any questions for Ms. Umdahl? Hearing none, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five four, resolution awarding the sale of two million and twenty, two million twenty-five thousand general obligation improvement bonds, series twenty twenty-five A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution, delivery, and providing for their payment.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just, uh, a couple of just takeaways from reading through that. I just think as we move forward, looking into the capital improvement and budgeting process, just the, I'm Noah, Councilmember Dragasich here with the financials, but a couple that stood out to me, the long-term liabilities ratio, the fixed cost ratio, I think both show, um, as we're moving forward in the process the rest of the year with the C I P, that maybe we need to, as Councilmember Dragasich has mentioned before, think a little bit about, uh, the debt load. I know we're taking measures to, to reduce that as-is. Um, I think that's just, if I'm reading those numbers correctly, those are definitely where it looks like we could, could use a little work at improving, so I think we just need to make sure we take those into consideration as we're moving forward in the C I P and budget process this year.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, um, Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
All right. Passes four one. Okay, moving on to number eleven, accept bids and award contract for the I ninety-four lift station and force main improvements, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five five.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On July eighth, we received bids for the I ninety-four lift station enforcement improvements. Uh, we received a total of five bids. Uh, the low bid was in the amount of one million two hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars for the project. We are recommending that the city move forward with that bid from A one Excavating LLC and award a contract. Just to provide a few details, um, this work includes replacement of a failing eight-inch, uh, sanitary force main with a new sixteen-inch H D P E force main. Uh, the line was upsized during final design to accommodate ultimate service flows for development in the area. The project also includes replacement of a failing ninety-inch corrugated metal pipe culvert that, uh, traverses Hudson Boulevard near the lift station. This project was its separate C I, it was its own C I P project. Um, it was discovered last year during development of the Emira site. So these two projects together total that one point two-five million or so. The project is proposed to be funded with a combination of sanitary sewer and storm sewer enterprise funds. The total is a little higher than initially estimated. However, of the five bids, the three low were very, uh, tight bids. They're, they were very close to each other, and, uh, we believe these are good bids and do recommend that the city moves forward with the project at this time. With that, my recommendation is to approve two motions. Motion approving Resolution, uh, Resolution accepting bids and ordering the contract to A one Excavating LLC for the bid in the amount of one million two hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars for the I ninety-four lift station enforcement, uh, improvements. Additionally, uh, motion authorizing the city administrator to enter into a material testing contract for the project, construction phase services in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Stand for questions.
Questions for city engineer, Councilmember Holt?
Where was the difference then in the, in the estimate versus the final for the sanitary portion? Because that's obviously where the increase was.
Right.
Where was the...
Yep, so, uh, Mayor and Council, I, we did an exercise to comb through the numbers, and unfortunately, uh, so this project was an add, a very late add and acceleration to the capital improvement plan last year. It, uh, it was added and accelerated as a result of, um, a wat, uh, a sanitary force main break that occurred last fall. Um, it became an emergency situation, which kind of unfortunately forced staff into a reactionary rather than, you know, being able to plan, uh, mode. So, um, in, in, in this project is very complicated. As, as final design progressed, a number of things were, were discovered, um, that were not necessarily considered last year when the number was scoped out. A few examples would be replacement of the pumps at the lift station, um, upsizing of the main itself, you know? The existing main out there is an eight-inch. We're actually going to a sixteen to accommodate all future development in the area. And as well as some other complicating factors, there's, pardon me, there are, um, a number of utility crossings that this contractor has to make, and those, uh, you know, have to be exposed. There's additional work, uh, to verify that they're not, you know, hitting, they're, they're, they're going to miss the line. You know, we don't, we certainly don't want them to hit the line when they're going across it. Um, but also just, uh, the nature of the area. Inwood Avenue is a high-traffic, wide roadway, and, um, the, during final design, we were actually finding a difficult, it was, it was finding, it was a little difficult in finding the proper spot to cross, and that was partially because this, the existing main has broken so many times that it's, it's hard to locate. So, um, that really, I, I guess I would call it a, uh, a site constraint or constructibility concern that pushed that price up. I'd like to think that if staff had a little more time to dig into the details, last year, we would have had a number that was closer to this. I think the bottom line is, like I said before, of, we got, we got a good number of bids. We actually had three bids that were very close to each other, so this is what it costs.
Thank you.
Maybe a little more than you wanted, but...
The cost is the cost.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dragasich?
You know, I just want to comment that I discussed with Nate the difference in the price and, and the process, and after my discussion with him, I walked away thinking, you know, I've been in that position before. You just, you come up with your best, with the information that you have on hand, and you know at the time, and then you get into the project and you find some things that you couldn't have been aware of when you started. And so I think, you know, he, it's tough for him to stand up here and tell us, you know, oops, we, we missed it, but it's completely... But it's completely justified. I, I'm completely satisfied, my discussion with him, that nothing was done inappropriately. It's just sometimes stuff happens and you ask to give a price based on your best estimate for the information you have, and that's what they did. And down the line, we did increase the size, do a few other things. So I want to thank you for taking the time to explain that to me, cause I know I can be a pain sometimes when I ask these questions. But you spent a good deal of time telling me about it and I was completely satisfied with the response.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll uh entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five oh fifty-five, accepting bids and ordering contract to A one excavating LLC for the bid amount of one million two hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars for the I ninety-four lift station force main replacement project.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Yeah, this will be uh interesting. Hopefully the design is taken into account so we don't have changed conditions in the project. Cause I know that when you're going underneath roads, it's always a difficult endeavor. Um, and hope it, it turns out with minimal changes, so. Uh, appreciate the work and explanation. I'll call the question. All those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five five? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into a material testing contract for the project construction phase services in the not to exceed amount of twenty-five thousand for the I ninety-four lift station force main replacement project.
Second. We have a motion and a second for construction phase services testing not to exceed twenty-five thousand for the I ninety-four lift station force main project. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a quarterly goals update.
Yeah, um, Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to um give you an update on the quarterly goals update. It's our second update since um the council adopted their strategic plan earlier this year. So uh, anytime you can ask any questions, if you have any as well. Under our goal of building a vibrant, inclusive, and connected community through celebration, engagement, and shared spaces, a couple of updates is that um the city council approved that contract with uh U L A to do the TAP program, that technical assistance advisory panel, advisory panel, um, for the hundred and eighty acres in May. And that project should start um still this fall, that's what we're hoping for. The community development department provided an update, um, kind of a timeline on the ball fields planning. Um, and our community development director will be leading um a discussion and an update with the Parks Commission and the joint workshop in September with the council as well. Under managed growth with purpose and intent, um, we just recently held a workshop to discuss the MUSA boundary for the comprehensive plan twenty fifty. And for the old fire station and the public works building, we are still in the process of um receiving submissions. And so that does close um for the RFP in August and that they've had a couple of open houses as well. For balanced finances, consistent with current needs and future growth, um, there was um for our new um, our B S and A software, new financial software, we're scheduled to uh implement that in quarter one of twenty twenty-six. So our finance department has been working with them on um the timeline for the transition. This year, we also implemented those new capital levies to fund the long-term capital needs. We also um just recently had a streetlight funding discussion where um staff is now working on exploring a streetlight fee. And we've had um scheduled in August, we actually will be bringing back um, you know, kind of scope of work and price to uh address our stormwater fees, city sewer and water connection fees, as well as um kind of talking about our long-term financial planning tools. So that's next month. This year, um, staffs are the city center building committee. And we're currently looking at our city center, um, our maintenance needs and future planning for that as well. As well as public works has been starting to inventory public works building needs and build out the CIP for that stuff. Under maintain responsive and transparent and adaptive governance, um, hopefully you all saw the water brochure, our first water brochure that we mailed to all residents this spring. Um, we have created an internal SharePoint site and um you all should have access to it as well so we can share, share the good stories of our, our employees and important information with them as well. We're gonna continue to build that out as we move forward too. Deliver efficient, reliable, and innovative public services. Um, for um seeking community input on fire response, we are just starting to internally brainstorm some ideas for gathering input from the community and maybe um thinking about any sort of public education that might help with that. We had um the public works uh operational assessment, a draft form presented at city council workshop in May. We are um meeting with Raftellus tomorrow to go over next steps after they've added um benchmarking to their report as well. We are happy that Bolton and Mink is able to provide us with GIS mapping. And so um staff as well as Bolton and Mink have been working on developing this platform. And um we just recently had a meeting and we're hoping to go live end of July, August, I would say. There's gonna be internal um layers as well as an external um portion too. So we're working to see what kind of layers we want the public to have access to. And under build and sustain resilient infrastructure to support a thriving and sustainable community, we did um implement the census um technology. And I think it's pretty cool, staff is working with that um to identify high water users. So, so we can kind of um look for irrigation that's on during um the appropriate zones as well as identify someone that might have a leaky toilet. And so staff's been able to work on that. And then we did just recently have our closed session um and discussing the area for the water treatment plant. So, do you have any questions? Just trying to answer them.
I think this looks fantastic. It's a nice uh catalog of what's been going on and what we're doing to kind of go over the things that we talked about in January. Just a question on the left-hand column, some of them are dark print and some of them are like a shaded print. Is that just a?
That is, um, I can't remember the exact terminology, but there were um our high, high goals and then our next highest goal. So the next highest goals, they're the gray ones.
Got it.
But just based on how things work out, sometimes we're working on those as well.
Yep, yep, okay. Anybody else?
Just say it's fantastic to see it documented and to be able to provide that to the community. It's, we haven't had it provided in this way potentially ever. I mean, it, so it's, it's very, very much appreciative of it.
Is there kind of a summary of this for the community on the website too, by chance? Of, I mean, I guess like a similar document to?
Well, it's included in obviously the packet, but. Good point.
I was wondering if maybe, cause it is really helpful. Since we're doing this for the first time, it's been, I know, very helpful for us, maybe for the community. I don't think information maybe wouldn't mean as much. Um, or if you'd feel like you'd have to expand more, so it's just more work, but I just.
Yeah, we'll explore that.
Might be something to explore.
Even um with our new website, exploring how we display the strategic plan, maybe um we'll look at it. It might not just be a document, but it could be an embedded um page. We also will talk a little bit about, we're dabbling in the idea of annual reports for different departments. And so maybe that would be where we could capture.
Yeah.
I think that falls right in line with maintain responsive, transparent, and adaptive governance, so, yeah, that'd be cool. All right, if there's nothing else, then we can move on to item thirteen, which is appoint planning commissioner. Uh, earlier this evening at six o'clock, we had an interview with um a candidate that wants to serve on the planning commission, Danielle Sorrell. And that's up for appointment if somebody would like to make a motion, entertain that.
Move to appoint Danielle Sorrell to the open planning commission position.
Second.
Motion the second to appoint Danielle Sorrell to the planning commission. All those in favor? Well, I should open it up for discussion first. Any discussion, sorry, I jumped the gun. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Uh, Danielle Sorrell is hereby appointed to planning commission. Thank you, Ms. Sorrell. The added uh agenda item is the hundred-year anniversary celebration discussion. Um, so s- city, the city of Lake Elmo first started as a, well, way long ago. It started as the East Oakdale Township and then became the Lake Elmo Township in uh nineteen twenty-five, which would make this a hundred years for Lake Elmo. And so I think the discussion is, I know that there's some grassroots uh planning that's been going on and I think, well, I'll let Councilmember Dragasich uh go on about it since he brought it up.
Yes, I, you know, I actually became aware of this hundred-year celebration. Marty Powers posted something on LinkedIn uh about a month or so ago. And I saw it and I really wasn't aware, but I got to thinking um as a city, you know, will we have some kind of celebratory or celebration process? Now I've learned that there's something planned um by Connect Lake Elmo. But it seemed like for a hundred years, the city could be a little more proactive. And, and my thought was one way we could make this more fun would be by sponsoring some fireworks um one evening. Um, my thought would be the mayor, as a leader of our community, could say a few words about the city and its hundred anniversary and how we've evolved and, and where, from where we started to where we got today. And we'd culminate that with, you know, fireworks display. I know we don't have that in the budget and it'd be an addition. I did some preliminary research um and found, don't know if it's accurate, but it says fireworks generally run like a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a minute um by those professional companies. I was thinking thirty minutes, that's forty-five thousand dollars. We'd have to decrease, you know, our twelve million dollars we have in cash in our general fund to cover that. But it's a hundred years, that's only four hundred and fifty bucks a year um for a hundred years. And, and I would think it, bringing the community together to celebrate this and, and some of the things are being planned. If we just, you know, evening, it'll be dark a little earlier then. I think it'd just be a lot of fun to have everybody standing around downtown and have the fireworks go off and we could all cheer. And I know it's half crazy, but um, you know, that's the kind of stuff that, in rural Minnesota, where I come from, usually do on a hundred-year celebration. I would like to think we could even get fancier at some point during the day. We could get, you know, some fighter jets to swoop over the city, which someplace other people do. So how would you do that? Me, I would contact Senator Klobuchar and ask her if we could get a display saying, three o'clock on September fourth, we'd like to have four or five fighter jets to fly over the city. And, you know, we'd all be downtown again celebrating. My little hometown of Chisholm did that all the time. The one year the Blue Angels flew over our, for our first all-class reunion, the Blue Angels flew over the main street during the parade. And so you have to ask for those things and it can be tricky, but the worst they can say is no. And, you know, I just think whatever we can do to improve, if I was, had more time, you know, and I thought this earlier and I'll take the knocks for not doing it, but the other thing I would do is I would set up a street dance one night. You know, if we get a DJ or a band or something and bring everyone together, you have the fireworks, you have the jets, and you have the street dance. And now you've got a hundred-year celebration that people will remember. And I know that Clarissa would love to write those checks.
Giving me a heart attack.
So that's, that's the thoughts from this one crazed city councillor.
And I fully agree. The, the hard part is it is July fifteenth, which means there is, last I checked, about four to five months left of the year. But I have zero issue. Our, our fun balance is beyond healthy. The hundred-year anniversary happens once a hundred years. Here's the thing, next year, the country is turning two fifty, so there's also gonna be an opportunity there. But there is absolutely an opportunity to let the community know that there's a hundredth anniversary here. Here's a reason to get together. Now, it, does that mean blending it with National Night Out as an example? I don't know, but I have, if the question is the fun balance on fireworks hypothetically, I have zero issue with that. That is why we have a fun balance for things that come up that are unexpected. In this case, I would be shocked if a resident were to say, that's a terrible use of mind to celebrate a hundred-year anniversary.
I think there's something you can plan for Labor Day weekend or that week by Connect Lake Elmo. And so I was thinking it'd be, you know, for National Night Out, it's probably out of time. But we have a short fuse between now and Labor Day that we might be able to accomplish that. And I, Nicole, I know Nicole has nothing else on her plate.
Right.
You're causing two heart attacks right now.
So Connect Lake Elmo is something about Friday, September fifth, it looks like. Uh, it looks like Lake Elmo Bank is involved. They have a gay media picnic, which is always good to get a hot dog and a couple of years of corn on that Friday.
I mean, i- is it too quick? Do we, our next work session is the second Tuesday in August. It, is it too quick to have it as a work session item and then not enough time to discuss for potential September fi- September what?
Fifth.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think that's too.
I think it's too. I would think the fireworks, you know, if we were, if I was, if I was a supreme dictator of the city of Lake Elmo, I would ask the fire chief to coordinate that because they're gonna need to be involved. Where you set the fireworks up has gotta be thought about strategically, um, given property and all that other stuff. Um, and you can see them from ways away anyway. But I would think asking, you know, fire chief to help us coordinate that and, and, you know, he probably knows some vendors that do that stuff, cause they all kind of know those things.
Potential exists, there might not be a site.
Might not be, I mean, you know, we may have to go somewhere way out of town, I don't know. But we, we couldn't do it without the fire chief saying this is the appropriate place to shoot them from. The mayor's backyard might work.
No, it's too wooded. It might have been early on in the development age, but the trees have grown.
Maybe back behind Lions Park potentially.
Well, before we get into the logistics, I'd just like to hear some other thoughts. I, I would like to hear uh staff's thoughts as well. Um, since this is just kind of brought up and they haven't had any time to really digest it. Or maybe they have been thinking in the back of their head, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, it's all, I, I uh, I do like the idea. I'm concerned about the timeframe of it. I think maybe one thing that comes to my mind with this, cause if we're gonna do this, we're gonna have to get the community involved with it to help out. It's gonna be involving Connect Lake Elmo, cause they have a lot going on as well and they're planning things. So, you know, I think it's gonna be important that we work with them. I guess my first thought, um, when we're doing something like this is I'd like to see some community involvement as well versus just the city of Lake Elmo paying for these. Um, again, that's another added complexity in a short period of time. You know, I, I almost would rather say I'd prefer seeing something that were, you know, we would match commute, the, the city account, the city would match uh community donations up to twenty-five thousand, uh, support half of it where the community is, is getting more involved to help fund some of this as well, the businesses, et cetera. Um, cause you know, like, uh, Lake Elmo Bank, I know, is, was already working with Connect Lake Elmo. Um, I'm sure there's businesses that would be interested in, in stepping up and, and celebrating the hundred years as well. I, you know, I think, I think it would just be another way to really make sure that this is something that people really want is if other people are stepping up to, to commit and, and put some skin in the game as well. I, so I guess that's just my thought is the timeframe is a bit of concern. I love, I love the idea. I wish, I wish we would have thought of it sooner, I guess, is kind of the main thing. Um, if we're gonna make it work at this point without having really planned it, I think I'd like. If we're gonna make it work at this point without having really planned it, I think I'd like to see it be partially funded by the city, but also partially funded by community.
I just don't think we have the time to do that effort with about six weeks. I mean, if we got donations, we could reduce the city's contribution, but if you're gonna get a vendor and get it all lined up with only just six weeks left, it's, you know, we could ask for donations if people would like to defray the cost to help out, but I think we need to commit the funds if we're going to get it lined up.
Yeah. I don't disagree. I think that's the, the tricky part is the timeframe is tough to do this without just kind of jumping in the deep end.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree. The timeframe is tough. Wish we would have thought of it earlier, but I absolutely love the idea. I think it's great. Hopefully you can rub some elbows and try to get some fighter jets flying over here, but with the timeframe, I think it's gonna be tough, but anything that I can do to help out, I would love to see this happen.
Thoughts, Administrator Miller?
Well, I was just reading the email from Connect Lake Elmo that we all received earlier this evening to see, you know, since they are our community event partner planner, to see what they have in store. So it looks like the, you know, the month of September, they're gonna be, well, they're asking right now to see if businesses or organizations wanna plan anything for the month of September, as well as developing, it's like a website to share memories and maybe photos of Lake Elmo. So, so I guess more interested in the scope of what you're looking at, just the fireworks? Or an event where the mayor's saying something and we're doing more, yeah, so just kind of more interested in that. Also, yeah, we, we could certainly reach out to firework vendors. I have no idea how far out they get booked, right?
Right. I wouldn't think they'd be that busy in the month of September, but you never know.
So is the thought, are we more looking, do we want to be willing to spend up to fifty thousand if we're able to organize this? Is, is that kind of the, the thought process here?
I mean, that would be my, I would be okay with that. And I will, I'll commit myself at least to talking with some business owners and Connect Lake Elmo and try and probably use under the advisement of someone else to figure out how we could maybe get some fighter jets and maybe some sort of quick street dance put together. That's kind of a big thing, but I think it'd be pretty cool. I, a couple of ideas rattling around in my head, but I wouldn't mind picking up that yoke and pulling it.
It's a good opportunity actually, potentially for the, the Lake Elmo Airport as well. When I was at the, the airshow in Eau Claire, some of the Lake Elmo Airport pilots were there and it, it, they, a lot of the, the airport was using it as an opportunity to reach out to a lot of the neighbors, is more of a positive aspect. And so from that standpoint, but then two, from the connections from as far as for, you know, maybe we're not gonna get the Blue Angels for it, but, you know, potentially some sort of flyover for it.
As luck would have it, I have had those discussions with the MAC regarding our hundredth anniversary and what is even potential regarding what can land there versus also how do flyovers work if you don't have a senator's phone number in your pocket, which I do not. We can't land anything substantial of that nature.
No.
But we do have opportunities that do exist. There are multiple historical planes that exist at South St. Paul and they often have a need to exercise their planes. They need to be out and flying and that's just a part of their nature. And there are opportunities that do exist with other planes. I'll, I'll phrase it that way. So it, it is, it's about having those conversations and I absolutely will, can help out with that, being on, being on that, Chair of the Committee actually.
Were there any discussions with the MAC about helicopters or anything like that?
I, I broached that topic as well. They did, they were not aware of any easier opportunities in that regard. But yes, helicopters, if there were such a, like, we don't, there's a helicopter unit at the MSP, but that's, that's another. Their, their main recommendation was to reach out to South St. Paul with some of their historical planes, like they have a B-25 there. They have a couple of other historical planes that do need to be...
That'd be really neat.
Yeah, yeah, that B-25 is actually just up at Duluth, I was just in it, but those planes do need to exercise, which, but yeah, I, I have no, just as the mayor said, I will gladly do whatever is necessary to have those conversations, especially given that this is a quick turnaround. I fully support having Charles give a twenty-minute speech on the history of Lake Elmo.
That's gonna cost a lot.
Nobody wants to do that, including me.
But I, twenty-five now, but I, I do think, given it is a quick turnaround, we might need to have a conversation like the city fireworks. That, that is it and everything else is, you know, coordinating with other entities? Or is it city also is coordinating a second thing, whether it's the dance, a talent show, like, because our staff do need to know how crazy are we gonna be from a council standpoint? And I, again, and fireworks, it may not happen, who knows, but I, I think that would be priority one for me. And then priority two might be at least city coordination to help to lead, like, what is that, that get-together thing? Maybe it's a dance-off, maybe it's a talent show, maybe it's a, you know, law enforcement versus celebrity softball game, like whatever that, that might be. I, I think there's that, that second piece and the other can be, you know, scavenger hunt coordinated by Connect Lake Elmo or by the local church or the Lake Elmo PTA, like, there, there are many other entities. If Tesla wants to do something, fantastic. Dairy Queen, blizzards.
Do you think, is it possible that we could do a little bit more of the, the groundwork to have the details figured out and actually vote on this at our first council meeting in, in August? I just, I'm concerned. There's so many details here that I'm concerned we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars. It's gonna be, we don't know where we're doing the fireworks. We don't have those details. I think, you know...
I think if we just authorize up to fifty thousand and fireworks provide all the details can be worked out. Because again, the fire chief basically, there's no place to do it. I mean, I think we have to work with the fire chief, but if we authorize it, provide the details can be worked out, then I think, you know, the other thing we talked with the mayor coordinating with Connect Lake Elmo, I'd be glad to help with that mayor, you know, and councillor, we're talking about, you know, see if you can get a flyover of some sort. I think that we've done enough then. Then we've planted the seed for a really nice celebration for the hundred. We just need to coordinate that with Connect Lake Elmo. So we're not doing something that would be, they think would be crazy or wouldn't work or whatever. And so if we authorize up to fifty thousand fireworks that never get spent, we haven't lost anything. But we have such a short time fuse, I think we need to, you know, six weeks is, is fairly short and we need to, we need to, if we delay, we may find there just isn't enough time.
I, I like that idea, because I agree fully with you, Councilmember Herne. We, there is a risk to it and if it's up to and it fails and it doesn't happen, then there's no dollars. But I also think it would, it would help with Connect Lake Elmo if they can be showing the city is willing to take a step. And then I think that can help also with the impetus of others who are, oh, there's gonna be a fireworks show, sweet, I will help with this, I will help with this. Because there have been, at least with events the last couple of times, it's been hard getting volunteers. Whereas in this case, if, if we're showing that the city is offering a potential fireworks show, which to my knowledge, I don't know if there's ever been a fireworks show in Lake Elmo. I don't...
I've been here twenty years, I haven't seen one.
I mean, that...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There might not have been one, because I don't know if it's a, it has to be a public purpose expenditure. Under, the city's a statutory city, so everything has to fall with under a statute that allows you to spend the money. I'm not aware of anything that allows you to spend money for fireworks, but there is a statute that allows for community celebrations and there is actually one related to centennial and historical celebrations, which is what you have here. So I think we would need to do a little bit more looking into whether the city could expend the funds for fireworks for a centennial celebration or a community celebration of some sort and I'd wanna feel more comfortable with that before you go and spend the money on fireworks or whatever it is that you want to purchase for the celebration.
So here's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, is that we table any motion, get our homework, figure out that we can spend the money. Just because we don't take a vote tonight doesn't mean we can't start the discussion to have something ready.
Yes.
I think we have to have the discussions, okay?
So...
I agree, we could start the discussion and find out if there's a vendor available and I'm pretty sure we have the authority, the, I have illegal knowledge with...
Legally okay to do that.
I can tell by the auditors.
Short order, okay? Yes.
I, I was just thinking that the vendors, if you're doing it on short notice, might require a deposit.
Right.
And so, and they're not gonna hold a date unless you put money down, so...
I might be naive, but I'm just not seeing a ton of need for firework displays in the middle of September, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I don't know.
Who knows?
Yeah.
I've been wrong many times before, as Jeff likes to tell me, so...
Well, Bear likes to say, if we get on the path and it just doesn't work out, we've lost nothing.
Right, right. And for those discussions, what date are we thinking? I mean, have we even gotten to that point of like, maybe what weekend to discuss with firework vendors or anything?
Can I think Connect Lake Elmo, something September fifth or something, you said there?
They said September fifth, yeah. But I mean, you could go, what is that? So hang on a moment.
Yeah, I think we, something we coordinate with...
I mean, you could look at the twelfth or the thirteenth or the, you know, I mean, you've got a number of days in September. I don't think you wanna get into October, but...
No.
Yeah.
But if we coordinate with Connect Lake Elmo, we're all on the same page and a community celebration...
As long as it doesn't interfere with the home Gopher football game, I'll be okay.
That's the, but that is the thing.
I second that.
There's so many logistics and that is what I'm concerned about, you know?
I don't wanna get too concerned. Make stuff happen also, I wonder.
But people don't like poorly put together fireworks shows either, so that's the last thing I'd want, is a poorly put together show and then saying, well, why did you, why'd you even spend this?
Yeah, my, my recommendation, they should get her done.
Get her done. All right.
All right. All right, so it sounds like I got a lot of things to do in the next couple of weeks, which is fine. Moving on to council reports. Councilmember Dragasic.
No report.
Councilmember Holtz.
No report.
I do not have a report this week.
You know, just at the cable commission meeting, it came up that Woodbury might potentially be looking at challenging some of the, the utility, the ability to use utilities for broadband. I know that wasn't passed this year in the legislator, legislative process. Woodbury, it sounds like is gonna try to challenge that a little bit, so it might be something to just kind of pay attention to.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a person at our firm that's been looking into that and talking with Woodbury about that.
They were looking at that. They're in a different commission, cable commission than we are in there and I think it's the East. I can't remember, East Metro. They're in a different one, but so just something to keep on there.
So what does that mean?
Where we could charge a utility, a franchise fee for, for broadband being run along the road, just like for telephone, for the power home. For Comcast, yep. For the cable, yep.
Because currently it's not allowed.
Correct. And I think the reason it's coming up is that...
Google Fiber stuff?
Well, and they're, they're struggling with revenue sources, because a lot of people are cutting the cable cord and they're just using their internet service to watch the cable TV. And so I think that's where a lot of this is coming from.
We connect a fran- collect a franchise fee from Comcast. It's limited to five percent by the Federal Telecommunications Act. Thank you, Attorney. This is broadband, which could, could be other firms that like T-Mobile, that's good, you know, over the air type. And put antennas on, on your streetlights or whatever it would be.
And I guess, and the reason I just think it's fitting, right, Nate mentioned it tonight, you know, the, the cost of this project that we're doing is significantly higher because of having to deal with all these utilities. And, you know, I was having a conversation with Councilmember Dragasic about this too and it kind of hit to really understanding like, you know, when we're charging these fees, like, that's what it's trying to cover is for when we have to do this type of work. And I guess this utility really is no different, right? We have to incur the extra costs as a city to make sure we're not hitting their lines as we dig, so... Something to just be watching, I guess.
Thank you. Councilmember Cragness?
No report.
Staff reports?
No report.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, anything?
No report, thank you. The quarterly financials are in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, appreciate it. Thank you.
No report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't know if you're aware, the Court of Appeals issued a decision on Monday. I don't know if you got a copy of it relating to the DNR water appropriations and it's going back to the ALJ.
Okay, so will we get an update from Mr. Thompson on that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
As well as, Clark will be providing a summary for your Friday update.
I mean, I read through it, but I'm not a law dog, lingo guy, but I got the gist of it.
Much to be decided still.
All right, so with that, I'm gonna adjourn this evening's meeting at eight oh four. Perfect.